I think we can scoop right down to... No, I'm just not used to doing it without a mouse. Let's see.
Agenda?
I guess. Questions on the agenda? Anything on the consentant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, please. I was just going to mention that we had a few months ago talked about discussing the consent agenda, you know, item by item on the work session, and at least we would have something rather than just arbitrarily passing it. Of course, obviously, when on the Thursday night where we have to vote, we can obviously save some time by having it earlier. But I'm just saying, we haven't, we've gotten away from that the last two or three meetings, I think.
Okay. I don't mind doing that. I don't remember us deciding to do that, but I'm okay with it.
Well, I know we did talk about trying to do it that way would be the second part, but at least we have credibility. But I don't have anything in particular, but I'm just saying, we need to make sure we go over it and at least mention it, item by item, and then let it go from there.
Okay. Anything on the minutes? Community use of facilities. Do you want to update us, Mr. Gill, on where we are on the wrestling situation?
Yeah. On the wrestling usage. I don't know about you, but I've received an email, and then there's been a, I know a county commissioner called today and brought it up with Clardy. And so, we wanted to let, there were two or three issues addressed as part of the communication I got and also with Clardy. So, we kind of wanted to set the record straight on that. One of them was communication. We've had multiple communication with the wrestling club, with Mr. Kennedy, President of the Club. Ms. Barnes called Mr. Kennedy pursuant to my request. Ms. McLeod sent him a letter pursuant to my request, saying that you've got to get the use of facilities form in, which case I felt certain that the board would approve usage. And they ultimately or eventually told us that they didn't intend to submit the form. And I think it's because they don't agree with the fact that the high school would get six hours a week maximum, some weeks less than that. Usage, the rest of the time, the wrestling club would get exclusive usage of the building, including the beginning of March to the following, end of the next October, they have full use of it. Blackman High would be out of it. So, at this juncture, they haven't submitted the form. One, secondly, we hadn't had any additional correspondence at all, I don't guess, have we, Angel or Paula? I don't think. And I told Angel today, even though we gave them a drop dead deadline when that had to be turned in to be added to the agenda, I said, if they'll get it in, I'll still bring it before the board, which really kind of, you know, violates our protocol. But we're trying to do everything we can to allow them the opportunity to use that gym. And I certainly don't want, I don't want to be, and I don't want the board to be painted as a bad guy in this issue, because we're not.
Well, we've got to have our, you don't want to be a stickler too much, I guess, on your protocol. But on the other hand, we have it there for a reason, and guarantee of insurance and, I mean, it's our building, right? I mean, that's the thing that the viewers need to be aware of, is when it's built on our property, it becomes our building. Am I correct on that?
You are, not only, yeah, you are correct on that. And also, we're cleaning the building. We're supplying utilities.
I don't think we're being unreasonable at all. Terry?
Well, I just, I just want to make a comment that I haven't figured out yet what the deal is. Why are they different than everybody else not filling out a form? I guess that's, that's where I have a problem with it. And then, secondly, it's almost like that if you've got somebody out here that's got some money, they don't have a piece of land, why not go out here to the school system and build us a building? And we can do what we want to. Is basically what's going on here. So, really, I don't know what the deal is about signing the form.
Donald?
How many? How do they want to use the building? Just anytime?
I think-
Is it, they have a schedule that they go by?
We, Ms. McLeod, Mr. Barnes and I, Ms. McLeod, Ms. Barnes and I met, or you went on a meeting, Paula? Ms. McLeod and I met with them. I think that they certainly, they think that the young guys ought to have, be able to have it immediately after school. Of course, I said, well, why should they have it immediately after school and not Blackman High School have it immediately after school? You know, their parents can get them there at six o'clock when Blackman clears out, and they can practice till eight and then go home. They can practice all day Saturday, all day Sunday. I think at the end of the day, they want, they want basically, am I safe in saying, they want exclusive usage, Angel? Yeah. And at the very best, Blackman High might get it late in the evening. Now, I would say this. We've also told them, like, Blackman High gets it three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from four to six. After that, they got it. If Blackman High has an out of town wrestling match, they get it. If Blackman High decides for some reason not practicing on that Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we try to give them ample notification, they get it then. I mean, we've really, Mr. Jernigan, we've done everything, I think, in our power to accommodate them.
They actually believe that that's their building?
Yes.
I think Wayne was first, sorry.
I think we've done an outstanding job of explaining to, not only in the meetings, but also when they bring these projects up. You know, if it's an athletic building for football or whatever it is built on the school sites, that we've been very clear publicly and behind the scenes in making sure people understand that once it's completed, we're responsible for the maintenance, we're responsible, it becomes our building. And as far as a question of ownership, that just doesn't seem hardly possible with the due diligence that we seem to complete every time someone comes to the board desiring to build something on school property for use of our students. So, I just, I'm surprised that that question would even be brought up with the way we've conducted business in the past.
Tim?
Hearing no dissent from board members that were here when this was passed. That was going to be the first question I had, was there, or is there any reason to think that we're violating anything in writing or verbal that would suggest that there was some agreement made otherwise?
No, sir.
Second question that I would have, is there something different about, what's different about this year than in years past? I assume, and that's all I can do right now, I assume that they have had more or less full use of the building in years past, or this subject was come up before?
And Angel helped me, but I think it was initially viewed as a kind of the Sheriff's Department, a club affiliated with the Sheriff's Department. And of course, Officer Kennedy is no longer affiliated with the Sheriff's Department. So, now it is officially a club that has no, no relationship with any county agency. So, with that said, I mean, I think that any usage should be like any other person or organization or club that's applying for usage. You know, initially, Ms. Vick and Mr. Sheldon wanted it full time, and I went back, I said, no, you know, they did have played a significant role in generating funds to build the building and all that. I said, let's come to some kind of compromise. And I thought what we did was very fair compromise. And, but obviously, they didn't agree with that. Also found out today, the wrestling mat, for example, that's really the property of the county that they've been using, bought for by county funds. Don't know if that's important to note, but I mean, we don't have any desire to take that and roll that mat up and not let them use it. All we want to do is have them fill the form out, turn it in, not ask them for a penny, and let us use it for, up to three days a week and sometimes less than that, for a three and a half month period. And the other, rest of the year, they got it.
Does not seem unreasonable.
Since Jeff is here, could we get a legal opinion on this? I think we already have had it, but I don't recall the exact terminology.
Well, I don't disagree with anything the director said. I think he gave an accurate description of how, what the history was with respect to the, with respect to the site and the changes that took place this year, because I think the school system was under the understanding that this is a Sheriff's Department program that was operating at that school, with the wrestling building. And when that ceased to occur, they were treated the same as any other off-campus organization would be using school facilities. So, there's no reason really to treat them differently.
Other discussion on this matter? We have routine bids?
Oh, before we go, also in community use of facilities, I just wanted to say thank you to the Walter Hill principal for the use there with the Boy Scouts. That happens to be my PAC, and just for clarification, it's Cub Scouts PAC 378. I know the Boy Scout Association is helping us out with the paperwork there, but that's a thumbs up for me.
Thank you. Routine bids? A transfer? Yes, sir. Donald? On the activity bus?
Activity bus?
Yes, sir. Do you have a question or a comment?
Well, the trade, we're trading in a forty-two passenger bus. Are we buying a forty-two passenger bus, or what are we buying?
Hang on, Mr. Jernigan. I'm going to be honest, we had Jeff put that on there. He's not here. We always have discussions. I think at some point, he and I discussed that, but I, if I can, I'll research that and get the information on Thursday.
Okay. Other questions? Let's see. Transfer technology carts. Bus seat upgrade, which we do all the time. Trend Micro antivirus contract. Questions on any of those items? Contract with Dr. Thomason. We give her a lot of business, don't we?
She's really good at what she does, though, yeah.
Mr. Gill, with these type, are these new, are these new teachers that go through, or is this just?
Oh, you're talking about the Dr. Becky Thomason?
Yes.
It's generally, I mean, it's the whole, entire faculty is part of their required in-service training. You know, they have, we give each, each school has up to $3,000, is that right? I believe. And they submit to us what their, what their plan is, and oftentimes, they request Dr. Becky Thomason. So, that's part of their expenditure.
She's not teaching, she's not, her seminar is not on the same thing year after year. It's such-
I think she tailors it to the need. Yeah.
Okay, Laverne Lake contract. Some non-faculty volunteer coaches. And that's it? Questions on any of that material? All right, I think that takes us to nine.
Okay. Building program. We left last time, Mr. Clardy, Mr. Morgan, myself presented anticipated numbers, also gave you history on previous numbers. Our future numbers are based on previous year's growth, and we use those percentages in the, as part of growth. We also went back to our firms and cleared up the one question you and I both had. We come back and, I don't know if you want to go back over those or not, but if not, we're reflecting in front of you again, our five-year plan. Again, I want to reemphasize that we've never done a five-year plan. It's just, it's hard to be real accurate five years out. The county grows fast, we do, and grows in areas that we don't anticipate. But pursuant to what health ed and budget County Commission asked, we're taking this plan back. And also, it's not a real aggressive plan. It's hard for me to say that when it adds up to, what, $170, $180 million. But it's a plan that's based on real numbers. If we grow by five or six thousand students over the next four or five years, we're going to need ample schools to support that kind of growth. And what you have in front of you is the plan that we submitted last time. I think we have decided to go ahead and reflect that middle school. Did we reflect that at the last meeting in 2014? Okay.
I think so.
So, this is identical to what we gave last time, right, Shane? Okay.
Except for moving Eagleville up a year, right? That was, that was a change we talked about.
Also, if I might offer clarification. I've got probably fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen emails about Eagleville. I think everybody on the board, myself included, his position is, we go down there, we ask for that Eagleville addition, and we ask for that high school. And I don't, I didn't intend for it to be referenced, that I didn't want Eagleville done because it's needed, no question. I don't think anybody on this board thinks that, as is Stewart's Creek High School. I mean, we have a desperate need for a high school. If we don't, as I've said, multiple times, we're going to have fifteen hundred, two thousand kids stuck out of portables by the year 2013. So, I want the people of Eagleville to know, when we go down there, we'll fight. I'll personally fight to see that they get their addition, and I prefer to leave it at that.
Further discussion?
I've gotten, I'm sure the rest of the board got the same kind of thing. I think clarification's good. A lot, lot have been worded as if something's been taken away. And I think it's also not being clear that it's gone through health ed, as I understand, I talked to Jeff Jordan personally about this. It's gone, health ed is, as far as it's gone at the County Commission level, it's not even gone through budget, hasn't gone through the full commission. So, it's certainly my position the same way, that I can't see where anything has been retract, retracted, don't intend to do that. And it's on the, it's on the plan to get done, and that's what, what I intend to do.
I do want the people at Eagleville to know that the reason I personally am pushing so hard for Stewart's Creek is because I don't want to see Laverne with six hundred kids out in a parking lot in portables, or Blackman with three hundred, or Riverdale back up to four hundred, or Smyrna High up to three or four hundred. I mean, it's just unmanageable. And they know, because they've got, how many portables are there? Twelve or something like that?
Fourteen.
Twelve or fourteen portables. They know how tough that is. But at a high school in particular, when you get thirty, forty portables out there and you're departmentalized, where kids go from period to period, from class to class, and they're outside moving around, and their car's right across here, and there's not adequate supervision out there, it's really a frightening, you know, proposal to go there. And it just scares me that we could get there. But I also understand Eagleville needs that addition bad. Donald?
I think it's helped a lot by inviting the Eagleville project as we voted on. In the last time, we had the Eagleville project all together, last week. Here, we actually have it broken down into phases, and that's the way we have presented it. And Phase One is theirs. And the phone calls that I have received and the emails that I have received, and like everyone else, it's been several. But I laughed and said, I've had to charge my phone twice today.
You know, you could buy a second battery.
That, but I think the reporting that, you know, that it's going to make a choice, that we were going to make a choice, and that made it difficult for them to accept, hey, we've already made a choice, and we're sticking with it. So, I think things turned out fine.
I think we're all on the same page now.
If I can, you want to tell, remind the board what Phase One at Eagleville includes? Mr. Clardy?
Phase One includes the auditorium, science lab, classroom, band room, and courtroom over by the adjacent to the new gym. Phase Two would be the addition out the back on the east side, which is totally classroom.
Any further discussion on that?
Well, let me just, if I remember correctly, when we were talking about this, Mr. Gill, that we were talking about just adding classrooms and not doing some of the others. And if I remember correctly, they said, hey, the main thing is that a cafeteria and auditorium is what we really need. Is that right, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
So, that's in Phase One. So, there, I feel good about it like that.
Okay. Number ten?
Before we go to ten, let me back up on one additional comment. I want to, if you notice on there, we also have LHS and SHS bleachers. And I talked to Mr. Rakes today about a separate issue, and of course, any time he and I have conversations, he ultimately works in bleachers as part of the conversation. I admire him for his tenacity in fighting for school. But a classic case in how bad they need bleachers will be this Friday night, when they'll have upwards of six thousand people, maybe more than that, at a stadium that has maybe seats enough for thirty-five hundred. Now, the other three thousand have got to go someplace. And, you know, he asked me today, part of our discussion today was, and I've already asked Mr. Clardy to look into where we might rent some portable bleachers to put out there for Friday night, so we can get people in seats, so that it's easier for security to, you know, have, say, hey, you get over in that seat where you ought to be. You know, it's a, I think that, what was the estimate on doing them, Gary?
On doing it, about five hundred thousand a school, including restaurants.
I mean, that's what, you know, we say, and I'm sure people out there look at that's outrageous, that's a lot of money. But, you know, the consequence of not having them can be pretty substantial, too. So, I still think we have to fight hard to see those guys get those bleachers somehow, some way.
Okay.
Okay. First of the top score of work revision. I received a memorandum from the state advising that all districts receiving rates of the top funds must submit a revised scope of work by November 30, 2010. Our revision, our county school revision, June 10, 2010 plan is presented. All Tennessee school systems scope of works can be viewed at the state website, and we recommend that you approve that. In retrospect, what's different is that we didn't do any changes with regards to what type activities would be offered, but there were some line item changes related to the dollars spent. And you can see that tab two. Wayne?
Going through the scope of work, it says recurring expense, yes or no? As far as the assessment and data research coach, is there, are they basically funding money for year after year after year? Or eventually, we'll have to absorb this individual entire?
We get money for four years. After that, the money does dry up, but that is an expenditure that, I think, people are gravitating towards that kind of position. I mean, we're obviously, over the next few years, it's going to be more critical than ever that we be able to assess data, that principals have to change instructional strategies. Now that teachers, thirty-five percent of their evaluation is based on test scores, they're going to want all the help they can get with respect to analyzing their data, coming up with new strategies. So, yeah, that money eventually will dry up, but I don't foresee that position ever leaving this county.
Well, the reason we received, and I'm talking about the state, was the data that Tennessee was already keeping. So, I guess this just enhances it that much more.
I think so.
But as far as the recurring, I think this is probably from just kind of perusing through it. This was really the only recurring entity inside this program, is that probably?
You know what? We were conscientious of that with this, and also the era money that we got earlier, we knew it was going to dry up in two years. And I know the board was, too, and you guys took that in consideration for approval. But, yeah, we didn't want to, kind of like pre-K, Mr. Jernigan, we didn't want to obligate funds years out that might dry up.
Other questions on the scope of work? Okay. Eleven?
McFadden School of Excellence's final change order. Southeast Contractors Incorporated has submitted a final deductive change order in the amount of $28,565.77 for renovation at McFadden School of Excellence. This will change the contract amount for the renovation of McFadden School of Excellence from $394,206 to $365,640.23. And we'll recommend that you approve the final deductive change order submitted by Southeast Contractors in the amount of $28,565.77 for renovation of McFadden School of Excellence. This will decrease the final contract amount from $394,206 to $365,640.23. And Mr. Clardy, we talked about that'll somehow go back into McFadden, right?
Discussion?
I have a question. I was going to say, it's always good when we, when we get a deduction, and my old math days at Walter Hill means it's less. Obviously, any time we get this, we obviously head in the right direction. So, Mr. Clardy probably helped kind of watch it a little closely and help that maybe.
Maybe watch it.
Do we, do we set aside contingency funds for projects like this as well?
We normally do, and a lot of the money you see coming back comes out of that contingency. So, we spend what we need to out of the contingency, you know, try to control the spending, and then take the rest of it back. So, that's what you're seeing coming back.
They did everything they were supposed to do, and hospital, and so, still getting back.
And for instance, we have lines ordered and some stuff like that that wasn't in the main contract. So, there's a whole laundry list of things that the school wanted that wasn't included in that, and we're trying to figure out some way to pay for that. So, this money will go back into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Number twelve?
Termination of non-tenured teacher. Appointment of independent hearing officer director of schools suspended Quinton Jones without pay on September 27, 2010. Jones, a non-tenured teacher at Oakland High School, has been charged with conduct unbecoming member of the teaching profession. State law allows a non-tenured teacher to have a hearing before an impartial hearing officer if he or she chooses to contest the termination of his or her employment. Ms. Jones has requested a hearing, and the Board of Education therefore needs to appoint a hearing officer in this matter. Tennessee School Board Association maintains a list of qualified hearing officers. Copy of the list is presented for your review. TSBA recommends the board approve the list in its entirety and allow the director of schools to choose a hearing officer from the list. And we recommend that you approve the list of hearing officers maintained by TSBA and allow the director of schools to choose a hearing officer from the list for the termination hearing of Quinton Jones.
Discussion? This is not something that would ever come before the board, is it, this, the matter? We're just appointing the officer? Okay?
You know, Angel or Jeff, one, talk about, I mean, I think it's good to update the board on that. For example, if you terminate a tenured teacher, their rights are different than a non-tenured teacher. Explain that, Angel, would you?
Do you want to come up here? We can't, the massive viewing audience can't hear it.
Right.
A non-tenured teacher has the right to an appeal before an independent hearing officer, which is what you have before you. Prior to the current school year, tenured teachers appealed directly to the board. That changed over the last year or so. They now have a right to appeal to an independent hearing officer first, and then either party can appeal to the board from there. And so, you may see both of those come up this year.
So, a non-tenured can appeal to the board, too, after the independent hearing officer, right?
No, the non-tenured teacher's appeal is over after the independent hearing officer. The tenured teacher may appeal to that second level now.
What about a classified? What are their appeal levels?
Classified has an opportunity to appeal. That appeal becomes to the director of schools.
So, in retrospect, the only one- So, in retrospect, the only ones that would appeal before the board would be the tenured teacher.
Correct.
Tim?
Are, are the standards for termination for, for tenured, non-tenured the same?
They are.
It's just the time period different, obviously. We know a non-tenured is a one-year contract, which means they can be terminated before, but the standard is the same.
The reasons for dismissal are the same, yes.
Other questions? Wayne?
As far as, so, does the director of school becomes our, become our designee in picking the hearing officer, or we're, or we're basically, that's our job, but we're, we're, we're wanting the, the director of schools to do that instead of the board, actually?
Well, this is the first time we've done it this way. And, and this changed, when the law changed and allowed tenured teachers to have the hearing before the independent hearing officer, then TSBA started compiling a list of people who they felt were qualified to hear them. And so, when we, when this situation came up, I contacted TSBA and said, how have other districts been doing it? Because there's no reason not to use their list. It keeps us from having to, to look around and find somebody. It's easier to schedule that way as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and what they told me was that typically, the boards had been approving the list. And what we have done in the past is give you a list of, of like three names, and then we could choose from that, that three. And then we will just choose one from that list. And it may depend on who's available to do it, you know, within the timeframe necessary. And that, that's how other systems have been handling it. So, that was their recommendation.
It used to be primarily, primarily local attorneys.
They have been.
Now, it's across the state, it looks like. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Angel.
13, student discipline appeal. Board has requested to review the October 26, 2010 decision of the DHA disciplinary hearing authority to uphold the expulsion of a student from Stewart's Creek Middle School. Student was expelled for one calendar year under the board's zero tolerance policy for possession of a weapon on school property. This review is pursuant to board's policy. The board may affirm the decision of the DHA, overturn the decision of the DHA, modify the decision of the DHA to a lesser penalty, grant a second hearing, which would be before the board, or deny a request for a board hearing.
Can you have your information in the folder at your place? So, please read that for Thursday. 14s are monthly policy manual reviews, so we've got some reading to do between now and Thursday, if you have a chance. General discussion?
Yes, sir.
Don?
I guess Mr. Mullins was here just a moment ago, and he, he called me and said that us voting to give the land to Smyrna, that they have elected not to take it. And I said, well, that seems like a fairly reasonable thing to do, but they have elected, I understand, not to accept the property with the concept that if it's not used for a historical site, then it would revert back to Rutherford County. So, there's, it's a fairly tight timeframe on that, I believe, because if I understand it correctly, the school, the building that housed the school is on church property, and they're getting ready to renovate, and they won't move, or they're going to carry it down or something right, right away. And when I, when I brought it up, that I thought it should go back to, you know, that, that should be in, included in it, that it would return to Rutherford County, I, I made the comment, and maybe the general city manager of Smyrna was listening, I don't know, but I said, I, I didn't want this to be a stumbling block in the historical preservation of the school. So, undoubtedly, they decided that that would be a stumbling block. I, I think it, from my point of view, I, I don't want this, this, the building to be destroyed. If we were going to give them the land, then I, I don't want that to stand from me bringing it up. Now, once again, I think it's a very reasonable request, and when I, and I'm going to say this. When I was talking to a neighbor of mine about it, he said, hmm, I said, wonder if Smyrna's already got something else in mind for that land? I don't know, but that, I might need to, which is of the board, but...
If the board doesn't object, shall we let Mr. Mullins speak to this and maybe shed some light? Is that okay? Any objection to that? Mr. Mullins, if you want to step up and say what, what the issue is here, we'd be glad to hear you.
Mr. Chairman, board members certainly thank you for this opportunity. We've been on this project a year, so it's, you know, we're moving through it. But anyway, I guess, I have one guesstimate, and I'll say guesstimate because I understand it's being surveyed, or indicates that. But I think it's less than a half acre, so it's, it's insignificant for us. It's not a buildable lot. No way for it to be, because it's sliver, someone would refer to it as a hook. I think it has been established the fact that the intent was back in the nineties to transfer all that property to, but due to an oversight, and we haven't been able to find anyone that would claim that. But anyway, it was left out. And so here, as they researched the property to set this, to meet the setbacks and to have the proper place for it to meet, someone in the town of Smyrna uncovered the deed that was still out there. So, that's where we are with it. For the use, it's at this point designed to be a very, what we call primitive interpretive learning center. Primitive meaning that there'll be no electricity, there'll be no water, plumbing facilities inside or anything like this. It's for schoolchildren to come and see how it used to be. And of course, the city or the town of Smyrna did agree to accept the maintenance and upkeep for the building. We were asked to raise funds. Ernie Johns, whom many of you know, myself, acted as almost self-appointed committee, working through the Rutherford County Historical Association, sent out letters requesting contributions and donations, and we have more than sufficient money to move the, the facilities. So, but the timeframe is that, of course, the church does need to move ahead with their building program because we have held it up this year for, and there will be a parking lot is, is the intent for the use of the property there.
What was the objection, Robert, to the reversionary clause by Smyrna?
Other than, I guess, just what reversionary clause indicate, of course, we personally have dealt with that at the church, you know, that was 1888 properties, and it's, it's just, it's a cloud on, on the property, obviously, when you have it. Some of you who deal with real estate know that. But I guess they saw it, well, the property is in front of the fire hall. In fact, includes the driveway. If you look at the, at the layout, I guess Mr. Clardy saw that part there. So, there's, there's more issue than just this, this school building that's got to be dealt with, for us to clean it up and make it good for both of us, or county and town, when I say both of us.
Wayne?
There's also going to have to be some infrastructure improvements, access to the, to the building, like a parking lot.
That's when they start, the town, I guess the town has been challenged in the past. You know, you attend and operate with the same setbacks and codes and regulations there's, you know, you require the public to. So, that was the beginning of this. Yes, it will require some new street cuts, and they were determining that in relationship to the corners, you know, the visibility for turning lanes and those type of things. There is the need for a parking lot. There'll be part of it. So, yes, there's some infrastructure that the town has agreed to take care of, as far as that part.
Anything else for Mr. Mullins?
Well, thank you, sir.
Appreciate your interest and your concern, yes.
Jeff or Angel, you want to advise us on if we were of a mind to rescind this? What would we have to do on Thursday to make that happen?
So, the board does want to rescind the reversionary provision of the previous motion. You can make a motion of that effect, and if you want to make another motion with respect to just granting the property, if that's the will of the board, you can do that.
So, would it take a super majority to rescind, or we'll have to look that up?
Yeah, it would take a super majority because it's not on the agenda.
Thanks.
Jeff?
Jeff, with this set of precedents, if we do this?
A precedent in what sense?
Well, I mean, we haven't done this before, and it's, and I'm a little concerned that that might, on this type of situation with, with a building.
Well, I don't know. From downtown, the school board has, I think, transferred properties to other governmental agencies over the years for various purposes. So, I think that has happened over the years. And there's been various caveats with it, whether or not the board should require reversionary clause or not. I think it's up to the board. You know, there's probably been times that the board has not required it and times that they have.
Aaron?
Different issue.
Can I, before we move to a different one, it's still a little puzzling to me, but here, would you say that the town of Smyrna's been pretty good to work with on our various building projects?
Yeah, I think they have, yes.
Well, unlike a certain other municipality, as we mentioned. I mean, there's no real conceivable use for the school board in this property, is there?
No.
Okay. Anything else on that? Aaron?
I have looked through the policy manual and tried to find something that can give the director of schools some more guidance in areas of professional conduct, or specifically professional misconduct. We've had issues this fall of when do you suspend a, an employee and under what circumstances? Can anyone direct me to where professional conduct or misconduct is, is outlined? Is it beyond the policy manual in a personnel matter? And would it be appropriate? Would it be appreciated by the director if there were a policy in effect that would give us, you know, some guidance on those kind of things?
Are you talking about, first of all, there is. Angel, you want to address where, where it stays in the policy manual?
The reasons for disciplinary action to be taken against teachers are statutory. And one of those reasons is, is just improper conduct or conduct unbecoming a member of the teaching profession. And then there are some definitions that, that follow under that in the statute. One of those is violations of the T E A Code of Ethics. And so, those are some, just some resources for you to look at. If you look at the T E A Code of Ethics, it has lots of information about the way in which teachers should conduct themselves at school and off campus. That, that's part of it. And then there are some other things in the statute as well. That's the general category. Now, the other, the other things that are listed in the statute are more specific.
I guess specifically, the situation that we had where we had felony charges, where we were advised that we anticipated these felony charges maybe plead down to a misdemeanor or something of that nature, and we were unsure exactly what action we should take, and it took us a little while to figure that out. I'm just wondering, is there, is there an appropriate policy that we could put in place for felony charges?
Well, first of all, they weren't felony charges, really.
Well, first of all, the, the part of the statute that, that relates to that in terms of dismissing or taking disciplinary action against a teacher is conviction of a felony. And so, what happened in the case that you're referring to is there were charges, there were felony charges that were not convictions at the time. And, and the information that we tried to relay at that point is that, you know, for a felony charge, that's not one of the statutory reasons for disciplinary action, and you must wait until that case is over, you know, to see if there are actually convictions. And what may or may not happen in that case and other cases is they may be pled down to misdemeanors, which leaves us in a situation where, under the statute, we don't have a reason for disciplinary action for off-campus criminal activity.
I understand.
I have talked with TSBA about that, and we are exploring some options with respect to developing a policy. At this point, their guidance has been that you might want to look at placing a policy in effect that requires teachers to report arrests, you know, so that you are requiring that you get the information from them initially. Because one of the issues you face as well is sometimes we know about it and sometimes we don't. So, if we put a policy in place that require them, requires every teacher to report those offenses to us, then we can determine how we handle them from that point forward.
And isn't it correct that that policymaking procedure, it requires some type of subcommittee and a little bit of a process in order to create a policy like that?
If, if we wanted to do something like that, enact any kind of new policy or revise an existing policy, it would have to go to the policy committee first and then to the board for two readings.
Okay.
But in connection with his question, I mean, I, I assume that, you know, and I, I don't understand where he's coming from. Say there's one, we wanted to have a crack, we wanted to crack down on off-campus conduct by teachers, in particular. There's only one, so much we can do.
Correct.
Pursuant to statute. Secondly, if there's a contractual agreement that is more severe than what statute allows, then the REA or the, they would have to agree.
That would have to be negotiated.
That'd have to be negotiated through the, through the REA. So, in retrospect, even though there's very, we can't stiffen our policies too much because of one teacher's rights and statute.
That's correct.
So, we can't increase our policy beyond the negotiated REA contract?
I think that we could probably increase, we could, we could implement a policy that requires teachers to report criminal offenses. That would probably have to be a part of negotiations as well. But beyond that, and, and this is in discussions with TSBA as well, they, they do not recommend implementing a policy that tells you what you do after that is reported, because criminal cases follow the, the whole spectrum. I mean, you, you can have a felony charge that's dismissed. You can have a felony charge that's reduced. It's difficult to pin down, if this happens, then this disciplinary action will be taken, and they don't recommend that you do that. But they, they do have some systems that have a policy in place that requires reporting of off-campus criminal offenses.
What action do I take as a board member to start that process that at least we get the reporting policy added to, to our policy?
Work with Angel to get a, a proposal drafted, and then we got a policy meeting coming up next month, and...
And I think what I can do is go ahead and get a couple of the policies that TSBA has written for other systems, and we can look at those.
I think that reporting would be an excellent idea. You know, we got criticized for being too slow. Well, we didn't know, my understanding is, we didn't know that, that arrests had taken place, and...
And that's the issue. I mean, sometimes unless it becomes a, a public matter, we don't know about it.
So, it wasn't that we deliberately waited till the newspaper ran a story. It's, we didn't know about it till the newspaper ran a story.
You know, and, and, thanks, Wayne, I appreciate it. But, you know, for example, if your options are to suspend, it can't be without pay. It's got to be with pay.
Correct.
Which means, and, and say if the trial or the, the outcome is three or four months out before it's determined, you know, we're compensating somebody, a teacher, that maybe, who may be 40 or 45,000, $50,000 salary, four or five months, knowing at the end they'll probably plead down.
And if they're reinstated, you must pay them for the time they were suspended.
Yeah, if you suspend without pay, you have to...
But I thought we were suspending with pay, was on...
No, you suspend without pay.
Without pay.
But if they are, if they're reinstated, you have to pay them for all the time that they were suspended.
Okay.
Plus interest, some cases do.
Well, I think the discussion was that most often, if you suspend without pay, then there's some type of attorney's fees that get rolled in when you try and give that back pay. You don't give that back pay without, you know, some attorney implications in that, and so you end up paying some attorney's fees along the way. That was the way it was explained to me in the moment.
Well, I mean, that, that's possible.
Okay.
But the statute says if you suspend a teacher without pay, and that teacher is subsequently reinstated, you must pay their salary for the time that they were suspended. So, irregardless of whether an attorney is involved, or they file a suit, or ask for some of the back pay, if they are reinstated by the system, then we must pay them for the time they were suspended.
Okay. So, get with Angel in terms of putting that on the policy committee agenda, and I'll take that for that maybe. Good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Does conduct unbecoming, does that depend on a conviction also?
No. I mean, the designation, there are two separate categories for dismissal or disciplinary action. One is conviction of a felony, and one is conduct unbecoming a member of the teaching profession, which has its own set of definitions.
Okay.
Does not include... Does not include criminal convictions at all.
So is something that we just experienced, can that be handled under the, or is it statutorily exempt from, from this other? I mean, we have two different sets. We have one unbecoming and then one felony conviction. So when we have an incident like we have, can that not be handled under conduct unbecoming?
The issues that I have dealt with and, and have, and read about regarding conduct unbecoming relate to actions at school, not off campus.
Okay, I wasn't sure about that. Okay, thank you.
Tim?
There's an unfortunate residual side of this that the law won't deal with, and that is the public perception of that teacher being in the classroom with that, whatever took place being public. And, you know, that, to me, that's almost a tougher thing to deal with, is, okay, you leave that teacher in the classroom, and you've got people upset by the fact that this person that has this stain, true or otherwise, I mean, I think that's what we all have to face if we're in public life, is that it doesn't always have to even be true, but it can certainly have to be perceived. So to me, that was one of the real issues there. And then, you know, let's, let's just, let's just think in this term, it's a wonderful teacher that you take out of a classroom and you leave kids with something a lot less than that, too. And I, I think that was the struggle that I had with that whole process, is does that teacher stay in the classroom with that going on, or you take that teacher out of the classroom and leave, leave the kids with a far less educational opportunity when you get there? I don't know how we solve that, but I think it's, we, we have to recognize it's a huge part of the equation.
Other discussion on that point? And the other discussion?
One point. Of course, we all were involved in the T S B A convention, and yesterday was the delegate assembly, where there were ten presentations to the delegate assembly to pursue through the legislature. And what we've kind of gotten to the point of calling Doris Giernigan's trustee law, did, did come before the delegate assembly, it did pass, so the trustee fee is going to be pursued by the T S B A, that the only thing that is paid is only what it would take to run the trustee's office. All other funds would stay with the school board or school system. So it's, and it's an attempt to cut back on the trustee fee.
So where's that go next?
It will, Lee Harold, who is the legislative or lobbyist, if you will, will take it to the legislature and find a senator and a representative to, to carry that bill to, to the House and to the Senate.
That'll definitely make Doris a very happy man.
Yes, sir. I, I meant to call him last night, tell him, but we do, we kind of refer to that as Doris Giernigan.
That'd be a good thing to mention, Doris legislators, when you run into him over the next few months.
Yes, sir.
Other discussion, Aaron?
Tim? Well, okay. Largely from the T S B A convention and also the orientation meetings that I've had, the planning that is incumbent on a school board to be looking into a, a rapidly changing future is, is really important. And I've thought of the unique opportunity we have here with no elections going on and things kind of calm right now, that if we planned now, maybe for the first of March, to have a school board planning retreat, that, you know, if, if we went ahead and set it on the calendar now, that it might be really effective. I've heard from other board members that, that has been done in the past, but not for a couple of years, and it might be effective in setting up some long-range goals.
And Aaron, you did mention that to me, there's a, and Joyce and I have talked about logistics, and we just haven't put it on the agenda or anything yet. Anybody have any comments on that idea? We did do it several years ago. I'm not sure it was wildly successful, but that doesn't mean we can't try again.
Maybe in the rerun would be, we'll do a much better job of communicating and collaborating.
Yeah, that's certainly possible. And, and I'm not sure the facilitator really took us where we needed to go either in that particular session.
Well, I think several of us were new to the process, and really, I'm not sure we knew where we needed to go, but I, I, I think the, I think we'd be better suited to pursue that and make it a more valuable opportunity the second time around, I would say.
There's some really different things in education as we fight all of this race-to-the-top things, and, and really some philosophical differences that I think Mr. Ash is going to start our understanding of on Thursday night in, in his focus presentation. A little bit different way to approach the educational process and the goals and, and what we're trying to accomplish. And as we take that out of prototype situations and really push it across the county and continue to make Rutherford County above and beyond anywhere else we compete, you know, I think it's important for, for the board to have that kind of vision. That, that's what we're tasked to do, is to set that vision and, and get some clear priorities for the director of schools and, you know, what we expect year to year. I, I think we need to, you know, get out of a, a normal monthly session in order to be able to set those goals.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? Tim?
No, not on that. New subject.
Joyce and I, Mr. Gill, will work on that and come forward with some possibilities.
Yes, sir.
I had a phone call right before I came from a former Oakland teacher who now is not teaching, but is a parent. Concern is, when I was in the schools, about the short days, much like we had today. And I, I don't think we've done a good job as a system, at least explaining to parents why they're done. I, I think there's a great conception out there that we just take short days off because that's what we want to do. And, and, you know, I, I shared that there's, there are some real valid reasons that have to be weighed. I, I, Mr. Gill, I know that you have had this brought to your attention before, that it creates a real hardship on parents and students in those kinds of situations. We just, I think we need to do a, a, a good job of sharing with people why it's done, that there is a recognition, there's, that there are some hardships that it does bring when we have those shortened days on parents and students alike, but this is the positive that comes with that negative. And I, I tried to explain it the best I could, and I think I did a fairly good job of getting her in good shape with it and ask her to share the, the word, but I, I think we need to do that. And the second part of that, I think, maybe is, do we have validation from our teachers and staffs that, that it is the two or three hours that the teachers were able to spend a day? Are those times well spent and it is, is it, is it time that they believe is very, very well used?
In response to that, as a matter of fact, at the last middle school principals' meeting, middle school principals pleaded, please keep these days, these are things are so valuable. You know, we're finally refining the P L Cs to the point where we're becoming very productive. I do agree with what you say. I don't think we, I mean, I think we've tried through news and notes and through various newsletters, and maybe James and I need to sit down and talk about using Messenger or something else to get the word out, hey, you know, here's the reason we can't take full days. We've got 180 days, got to be accounted for, we can go, we can go do half-days and give the teachers some planned time, but planning for teachers is crucial, in particular, like when we first started this, now we talked about, there's no evidence out there to suggest that a teacher who stays in their room locked behind a door all day, is not working as part of the team, is getting any better, that they're improving their instructional methodology. And now we've got people working as teams and, and producing benchmarks and strategies and, and sharing ideas, finding, just the way it should be. And we really wish we had more time, and the principals wish they had more time. But it is an inconvenience to do those on parents, and I understand that. I don't, I don't know what the solution is, because we can't give them full days, it counts against us, will affect our state calendar, but we will make a better effort to get the word out. I, I agree with you, Mr. Agar.
That was my suggestion, utilizing school Messenger every time, just, it may be redundant, but, but send them the same message every time that we're going to do this, and eventually everybody will say, oh, okay, that's why we're doing it. So I, I would hope we would be able to do that.
Other discussion? Donald?
This is back to the building program, Mr. Gill. The elementary schools, this is referring back to the city, talking about building an elementary school. Have they decided on where and when they're going to build their elementary school?
I'm not sure. I don't think they have. No, James said?
I know that from meeting with the city in the past on something like this, they are looking at the west side of Mercer's World, but that's, that's as far as they've gotten. They don't have any plan specifically and not really the time, you know, as of just a couple of months ago.
As far as I know, Mr. Jay, they've got, they've got some seats. So I don't think they're doing anything right now, but anyway.
Well, we've got our proposal to, to have some sort of meeting with them, and we're waiting for them to respond to that, but maybe I need to nudge them a little bit and see, because that would be topic one, I think, in sort of discussion.
To me, it's a prime example of why we would want to have that communication, we don't have to sit here and guess. They don't have to guess what we're doing, they don't have to guess what we're doing. It's a share of information. I would hope it happens sooner than later.
Yep. I'll check on that. Yes, sir.
And, and back to Mr. Mullins, what, what are, are we going to address that in some way, or what are we going to do?
Somebody wants to make a motion on Thursday to rescind, and then make another motion to transfer the property with no, no reversion clause. I think that would be the parliamentary proceeding.
And that's, and that is what you were talking about with the supermajority?
Yes, sir. I think we need a five, a vote of five in order to do anything since it's not on the agenda.
So if someone brings it up, it's a taken teacher of the...
Anyone can bring it up.
Yes, sir.
We all voted.
Right.
On the majority vote.
Yep. Just take five to pass instead of our normal four. And then I guess also the, the motion to transfer the property, that'd be a separate motion, right? That would also take five, a vote of five? Or could we do it all in one motion?
Yeah, we could probably work on the same motion.
Okay.
You want him to write a motion?
That would be fine, because I, I don't want to be a part of destroying a historical school.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be helpful, Jeff, if he came forward with that.
But you got one.
Anything else? Not? We'll see you Thursday, and words, Jerry.
Mr. Michaels, do we need to put these...